Good morning, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Mesa City Council Study Session for Thursday, August 27. The first item on our agenda is to review items on the agenda for the August 31 regular council meeting. So, let's take a look at that. First few items are liquor license applications. And then Agenda Item 4 is taking action on various purchasing contracts. And then Agenda Item 5 is taking action on resolutions, extinguishing some easements. Six is public comment on some zoning cases.
Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Luna.
I'm going to ask Jim if he can go ahead and clarify 6D.
I'm sorry, 6E?
D.
D, excuse me. 6D. Jim?
Yeah, good morning, Mayor, Councilmember Luna. This item is, let me tell you sort of the intent, and then you'll understand the change better. The intent is really to limit legal challenges on our terms and conditions for the sale of utilities. And so currently, without this change, how it works for water and wastewater in the county is that the terms and conditions say that we provide water and wastewater, subject to certain conditions and with a number of exceptions. What this change does is sort of flip that and says that we do not provide water or wastewater services in the county unless, and then we have exceptions, and those exceptions actually mirror those conditions that we have today. So the end point is the same. But why we're flipping it is to change the starting point, that we don't have an obligation to provide water or wastewater in the county. And the purpose for this is to limit potential future litigation or liability exposure.
7B?
Yeah, Chris Richens. Maybe you could walk us through 7B. We're kind of dividing the plat up. I just want to make sure we demystify that. It's the plat for Riverview.
Right. So John, can you help me out with this one? Thanks. I got the, pushed the wrong button, just a second, I'm going to grab the right button. So yes, Mayor, Councilmember Richens, we have the development out there at Riverview. And as you recall, the site plan, it has the different sections for development between the park and the commercial area, the stadium itself and so forth. And so this plat now actually divides up those lots, so as we continue to look at further development in the area, it indicates the right ways for the streets, those types of things that a plat usually does. It just continues on with the development proposal that's already underway.
This is just the formal legal mechanism for dividing all the individual plats. It makes them easier to develop.
To follow track in the future, yes.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions related to Items 6 or 7? So it appears everything is on the consent agenda at this point, and we'll just proceed unless someone prior to Monday evening decides to pull something off. Is that okay? All right. Next item on the agenda for this meeting then is hearing various presentations. First is Item 2A, hear a presentation and discuss the application of City Link.
Good morning, Mayor, Mayor, and members of council. My name's Lenny Hume, Transportation Department Director. This morning, if you have noticed yesterday, we sent out a press release, we did an update to our application to notify us of graffiti out there in the field. If you remember before recess, we were in the process of updating our software, upgrading our software to allow us to get a little bit more robust software and to notify us a little bit cleaner to our staff and to our contractors out in the field. So we just updated our software. The first batch that comes out will be related to graffiti reporting. Anything that you see out there that's graffiti will be, you use this new link called City Link, Mesa City Link, and I'll show you quickly how to get that on your phone. Councilmember Richens already got it? All right, great. But in the next, probably next 30 days, we'll have much, many more features that'll have much more issues that can contact us directly or any other department we have. We'll be adding on to this. It's a system that we own, and we can adjust it and add and subtract as we wish as we continue through this. So City Link is a company, is a service that was put together by a company that's one of our business partners with our asset management software. So it links up right up with our system called City Works, which is our work request. So when you call in something or your constituents call in something, we add that into City Works. This system links right up to our City Works system and kind of takes me out of the, or some of our staff right out of the picture and sends it right to our staff to get the work requests done. The new link is called Mesa City Link, as I mentioned. On the Apple Store, it's really quite simply, just type in Mesa and then City Link as it, as you've done. Download it on the Google Play Store to do the same thing. We'll have shortly, or soon, we're working on the features for both BlackBerry and Windows versions, so we'll try to get all the platforms that are available out there. And as the updates come out, as we add more features, the software will automatically update. I think on my Droid, I get a notice that it wants to update my version. You'll get something very similar to that as it's updated. So you see the picture of what City Link looks like. It's a nice picture, very simple to use, very similar to what we had before. I was quickly run through it. You take a picture, you got to turn on your GPS locator on your phone to geolocate where that app, where that issue is. In this case, it'd be graffiti. You can do photos, videos, and audios. Obviously, the bigger the file, the longer it takes to download it. I noticed on my Samsung device, I have a little bit higher resolution, so it takes a few seconds to download some of that stuff. So you may want to drop some of the resolution down on the pictures. Right now, again, it's just graffiti, but it also asks you some questions on where it's located. If it's on a traffic signal cabinet or something like that, we'd like to know. It doesn't have to, you don't have to answer that question, but it helps us because it actually routes it right to our traffic signal folks, so they can go out and take care of that instead of going to our contractor. So it just, enough, if, obviously, if it's offensive or gang-related, we kind of like to get some of that information as possible. And then there's some places you can put in some information notes as you wish, and you just submit it, or you can submit it later. You don't have to download it if you're concerned about how many, your data plan or something like that. You can actually take a picture of it and then geolocate it, and then you can come back to your place. You have a Wi-Fi and you can download it. And that's basically the system.
Richens? Thank you. Counsel, Mr. Richens.
So going forward, you said that you plan to work with other city departments. I know that we had other city departments in the old system. How are we reaching out to those that are, who owns this app? And who's responsible for, owns, meaning like who's in charge of it? And then who's responsible for reaching out to each of those departments? Because co-compliance used to fold in, I think, and others. And I know you said that you have some plans for that, but tell me a little about those plans.
The City of Mesa owns the application, so we are reaching out. In fact, we have-
Which department is in charge of it?
Well, Transportation's kind of taken a lead because we have, we've had a-
Not IT?
Well, IT, we're working directly with IT. We're all in the same room together. In fact, we're, in fact, we were all the way up to yesterday in the same room discussing this stuff. IT is reaching out. We have co-compliance, we have business services, working with us. It'd be solid waste if you have receptacle out there that's damaged or whatever. And we're adding all those features in. And it's, again, it's a system that we own. We can add and subtract at any point. It doesn't require the vendor to go out and do a major rework to it. We can add applications to it.
This application has, my constituents really love the old application. And, you know, even though the press release didn't include links to go take it right to the App Store, a lot of people can do that. And I'd love to have some that I can send out in a newsletter that they can link directly to be able to download the app and really do some publicity around this. I don't know if we can do some Channel 11 or not, but this, the predecessor to this app was one of the more successful things that I think the city has ever done from a quality of lifestyle point. So getting some publicity around this, I think, is really important and because, particularly because of the tool that, I mean, you deputize 435, 450,000, how many people we have now out there in the public with your, be your eyes and ears. And through this application, we can really get a lot done quicker.
Sure. To go along with this, Councilmember Richens, this system allows us to also do various things, a little more social media. If you have something you want to tweet out or get information out to the users. We've been thinking about, you know, we had some issues at storm events or something like that. We can actually send that information out and do, and we also can do some geo-fencing, which is basically put a fence around the areas of assets that we maintain or that assets are maintained by SRP. So it actually goes directly to SRP instead of the City of Mesa. Or if you're in ADOT right away, if it happens to be that, or, you know, we can drill down to even whose water line it might be, so that we can get it to the right folks.
You know, Chris, I was wondering if maybe we could get some kind of a report in the not-too-distant future about the plan for reaching out to the other city departments to make sure that we capture code and all those other little neat things that the old app did. I just wanted to make sure that they're being reached out to and included and incorporated, and that they're able to get their information built into it as quickly as possible. Because if we don't plan for it, it's going to languish, and we need to do it as quickly as possible.
To go along with that, we should see something in the next 30 days. We are working directly with all those folks. We are, the only reason we rushed out graffiti is the one, that was a critical one. We had a new contractor come on board. We really wanted to push that out so that we can monitor our contractor, and this is a great opportunity for us to get all the bugs out of it, and then we can really fully release it. You'll see much more, actually, you'll see many more issues on the new system, at the system than what we had on the other one.
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Yeah, thank you. Lenny, if you don't mind, I got a couple of quick questions. Civic engagement obviously is a huge deal. We need to figure out as a city government how to interact and get feedback from our constituents better than we do now. I think we're, and this is a great step towards that. I know municipal is a similar program, and to me, I mean, we're, I think we're all trying to reach out through social media as best we can. And I think the answer is, you know, all of the above. We need to do all of these things, but I would love to see us coordinate those two or three things that we're doing somehow together. I'd love to be able to push a button and go from City Link to the city's Facebook page or from the city's Facebook page to municipal or to go to one platform rather than three platforms and to figure out, you know, just a little more integrated approach so that, I don't know how, I just loaded City Link, it's on my phone. The next time I see a piece of graffiti, there you go. You know, I'm going to pull it out and use it. But I don't want to have three different city apps on my phone.
And actually, Mayor, that's why Diane's up there. We've been, we've been working on that direction.
Good morning. Yes, we, this is actually going to replace what used to be called Citizen Response as well. We have a web app that we're going to get rid of as we move on to this. We don't have multiple ways. And that one is literally a, I need to tell you something, I have a concern, a complaint, it's not just a request type of situation. So we absolutely are going to remove that and then tie all these different, with municipals that are together, so that it's like a one-stop shop to be able to do this. And we are, this project isn't over because graffiti has started. We are leading it with project management that has city manager involvement and a variety of other departments, so that we, one by one, can start to grow the variety of requests that are out there for people to select.
Great. Thank you. This is exciting. Look forward to seeing it develop and become potentially the way that people interact with city government. Sounds great. Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Next item on the agenda is to hear a presentation, discuss, and provide direction on the Downtown Vision Committee recommendation. Joe, Natalie, this is an exciting day. Thank you for your hard work. We're looking, we're looking forward to hearing more about what you've been doing.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. My name's Natalie Lewis. I work in the city manager's office. And, you know, as the mayor said, we're here to talk to you about the Downtown Vision Committee and their recommendations. This is a culmination of about a nine-month process, and it's really in light of, the council knew that, you know, this weekend, we celebrated light rail coming in and through our downtown. It's a great transition. It's a wonderful opportunity for transformation in Mesa. So this was really an opportunity to bring forth some of our stakeholders and leaders in the community to really tell us and help us formulate what is our vision and intention for the future of downtown. They worked very hard to try to keep their recommendations as brief and brilliant as possible and in one-page type of a document. You identified seven members with the goal of making sure they went out, reached out to everyone in the community to make sure that they were recommending a shared vision. Joe Wilson is here with me today. She's the chair of your committee and, of course, with Benedictine University, one of our very strong partners in downtown Mesa. And I'm going to just turn the presentation over to her, and she'll introduce the rest of her team and move forward from there.
Thank you, and good morning. And it's a pleasure to be here. It's been a long nine months getting to this point, but we're excited to present this to you. Two of the members of the committee are here. The rest of them are listed up there on the task force, but Debbie Elliott, Debbie, would you stand and be recognized? And Charles Humandl? And with his leg, he'll sit. Thank you. You will see from the committee that we had a nice cross-section of individuals. They had brought different expertise and different experience to it, and so it was a good balanced committee. The first thing that I want to share with you is really why did we and what was our charge? There were two catalysts that really came about that brought, or that were drivers for this. First and foremost was last Saturday, the opening of Light Rail. And knowing nine months ago that we would be opening it soon, we needed to see where would we be going as a city in our redevelopment and revitalization of downtown. The second driver was really, in my mind, the most important part of it, and that was we have a lot of wonderful stakeholders that are interested in downtown Mesa, many, many groups. And they all have visions of where they wanted to go, but there wasn't one shared vision. It's like many roads to get to one place, but, you know, not one, not merging at one location. We won't meet up. And so it was that catalyst that started our process. So our first task that we undertook was to listen to all of these stakeholders. We had 13 meetings, task force meetings, in which we had any place from one to three stakeholder that presented. And you will see that they were across-the-board representation of people that had interest in downtown and groups, some of them were city departments, others were groups, nonprofits, and various groups in it. After that, we wanted to make sure we didn't miss anybody. And so our next task was to reach out to the community, and particularly to the non-traditional community that would not have been represented in those stakeholders. We had about 12 of those, what I call listening sessions, and those were sessions that represented, we had one with students, we had several with faith-based groups, we had a couple with Spanish-speaking parents and representatives of people that live in and around downtown. So we tried to get a feeling from everybody of what their needs and interest and vision was. So in total, we had 25 listening sessions, and then we had one final general public session. With that in mind, what did we learn? Well, I think a lot of us thought, at least I did, that we had a daunting task to undertake, and how are we going to come together and have one shared vision for a population of almost a half a million people? But one thing that happened about halfway, I think, through the process for most of us, we began to realize that there were common themes, that they were emerging, and it was going to be really fairly easy to do it. We found that there was consensus in what was needed, which was exciting. And the most exciting for me was that every group we talked to saw that there was great potential for downtown. People were excited about downtown, and so that made it even easier. So with that, the group then took all of this input and came together with our various expertise and experience and created what we had been asked to create, a brief and, as Natalie has said, brilliant. I will say it's brief. I'll leave it up to you to determine if it's brilliant on it. But with that, I would like to, at this time, and I think you all have it in front of you, but let me read to you what is our vision that we'd like to present, our shared vision. Our shared vision is that downtown Mesa is an innovative, art-centered, quality-focused, eclectic blend of old and new. Downtown Mesa is alive with options day and night, is connected to the local and regional residents and visitors, and offers a variety of activity and safe gathering spaces. Downtown Mesa is a location of choice for, to live, work, and relax. We felt that this represented what we heard and the vibrancy that we thought downtown could become. But a vision is not going to get you anyplace unless you have a map to get there. And so with that, we then took all of the content we had and began to come through with the themes we heard and came up with what we caught were the key priorities. And at this time, I'd like to share with you the key priorities. Now, as we go through these key priorities, and you will see that there are 12 of them, each one of them, we're going to show you some slides of pictures. One of the things we all know, you know, we always told, pictures are worth a thousand words. And as we went through this process, what several of us did is we brought back pictures of locations where we had been, where there was a vibrant downtown, and we were excited to be there. And it was an image that we could work towards. And so we have collected a group of pictures that will help you visualize, not necessarily exactly, but maybe give you a feel for what we envisioned this shared vision would look like when completed. So our first priority we have is light rail and partnership, the first two. Light rail. Ensure light rail is a catalyst to create sustainable transient development and economics. One of the things that I think is important to all of us, and I know it is important to you seated around the table, is that with light rail, it brings new people and lots of people to downtown Mesa or to Mesa in general, rather than taking people out. And so we stress that, and we heard that a lot, is that we want people to come to Mesa. We think that this light rail is really that catalyst for that. And having an office right out front of the light rail, it's been fun to listen to it, go and watch people go on and off. And last night, as I drove home to see the parking lot at Mesa Drive filled, knowing that it's being used. So it's starting, and we feel good about that. The second one is partnerships, and I indicated that one, I thought, was really critical. And that is to keep stakeholders well-informed, involved, and partners in the downtown Mesa's future. Seek ways to work together and avoid duplication. And I think that if we all get on board with the shared vision, that this will happen with all of the stakeholders. The next one is market rate housing. Promote creative, unique, diverse housing, small, medium, large scale, and opportunities in and around the downtown core that attracts residents regionally to consider Mesa as their resident city of choice. And that, I know, I have a vested interest in that with student housing, and there's, I hear all the time, people say, I wish there was someplace I could live downtown. It's going to be an exciting place to live, and we think it will be. Art is the next one. Build on the investment made in the Mesa Arts Center and museums to leverage and incubate a more established local downtown arts and makerspace scene and to develop a younger, hip arts culture and vibe downtown. This is one thing we heard throughout, that the one anchor we have, the one jewel we have in downtown is all of our art and our museums, and that we need to continue to build on that. And I see that happening, and I think it will continue to. But with that, the next one, and I know, Mayor, this is one of your initiatives, and that is restaurants and nightlife. Continue to actively recruit and deliver a wide variety of indoor, outdoor dining and nightlife options, such as 24/7 diners for students, a wine bar, and destination restaurants. We need activities downtown to draw people here at all hours, not just during the day and during the week. We need them weekend, we need them here at night to create this vibrancy. And to do that, we've got to build on our nightlife and build on adding more eating establishments downtown. And along with that is the next one, and that's entertainment and events. Create a variety of entertainment options and special events as bowling, theaters, nightclubs, and signature special events. Well, we had a signature special event last weekend, and all of you that were there know that it brought a lot of people in and a lot of excitement. And what we saw through a prime example of what special events can do is that they had footsteps. I don't know whether you all saw the dinosaurs and the footsteps to the museum. And Natalie reports to me that the activity at the museum was greater than it ever been, and so it actually drew people. They rode, came down to see the opening of the light rail, but they actually engaged themselves in other activities. So we think that there's a lot of activities, and I know, Mayor, you have some ideas of activities that, and events that we can engage in. And our Friday nights are many activities we have, Fourth of July, and we want to build on those, but we can't have just single events. We need to have entertainment that's available 24/7 or at least year-round on it. With all of this came the next critical priority, and that is for safety and security. Proactively prepare to address public safety and security issues that have developed from the transient rider population in and around the light rail systems. Consider a bicycle police presence. I don't need to say more than safety of our citizens is critical. The next one, form-based code. Look into form-based code as the standard for downtown Mesa in order to attract creative, quality-oriented developers and entrepreneurs in Mesa. The creativity of what we can see in downtown, we believe, will be enhanced and the speed at which we can develop if we move in this direction. Next one is public infrastructure. Make strategic investments in public infrastructure in and around the downtown core to create a safe and aesthetic-pleasing transient pedestrian walkways and parks, and a new and refreshed streetscaping and shade along Main Street, and creative use of alleys, such as pedestrian thoroughways, walking, I mean, opening storefronts onto the alley, and alley cafes. All of these will be helpful. One of the things that we heard was that there seems to be a, there are not roads that lead right down into downtown. In other words, there's not things that pull you into downtown. We go east and west, we've got Main Street that can pull us in, but outside of that to pull in, and we feel like that if we can create some of these thoroughfares and walkways and things, it'll pull people from the outside in. And also, this helps in creating parking on the First Avenue and First Street as opposed to on Main Street. So we feel this is critical. City Center will be one of those projects that will enhance that, and it will create kind of a neighborhood feeling. And you've seen the splash water things that kids love, and that's one of the visions we have of someplace located, and kids are wanting to, you know, mom and dad take me down to that, and it pulls people in the downtown area. The next one we have is heritage. Ensure Mesa's historical assets are celebrated and preserved, such as the Revival of the Stuccle, and uncover Main Street historic character and architecture. And that, if you see the picture there on Main Street as it used to be, and many of you around here remember that, we were vibrant and excited at one time down here, and we've lost some of that, but we don't want to lose our history. We want to make sure some of that architectural history that is here still stays here and that it becomes both a combination of old and new, and that will be a characteristic that will be enhanced with downtown. Next one is to promote downtown. Be proactive and intentional in promoting downtown Mesa as the hot area for entrepreneurs, artists, students, and businesses. And we have seen lots of cities that have been very active in that promotion, and we think we can. It's not just a city endeavor or city government, it is citizens in general in promoting it. And the last one is parking and wayfinding. Ensure parking is available and easy to find. Consider making space parking, I mean, surface parking lots on-street parking and parking structures as economic development tools to attract and stimulate creative development, such as developers could buy into the parking assets in exchange for reduced onsite parking requirements. We've heard from people who say we don't have enough parking. Well, wrong. Transportation Department can tell us we have lots of parking downtown. It's identifying it and making sure people know where it is and to get there. Those are the 12 priorities. Our conclusion is that with those 12 priorities, all of the stakeholders that we listen to can see that there is a niche in there where they can work towards. There's something that they can connect with. One of the things that we wanted to make clear, and I think that this is important for you, but also important for the community, this is not a recommendation of list of priorities that is to be totally taken, addressed by city government. This is a community effort. In this list, there are many areas where private industry, private citizens need and have to be involved. And so it becomes a joint, shared activity, again, going back to our shared division, our shared vision. So we hope that this has, is a vision, and it is a direction that will help us as citizens to revitalize downtown. In conclusion, I really want to thank the staff at the city who have been so helpful to us. We had individuals working from the city manager's office, economic development office, the attorney's office, and were there with us all the way. But a special thank you to Natalie, who has been our anchor through all of this and has helped us and done all of the legwork, and to the committee. And it is with that that we present this recommendation of our shared vision, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Counsel, questions for these folks? Chris?
First of all, I'd like to thank the committee of Char-
First of all, I'd like to thank the committee of Charles, Debbie, Joe, Marcos, and Mr. Perez. I know that they couldn't be here today, but thank you for all your hard work that you did, because I know it was a lot of time and effort. Two things that I think that can tie into right away, restaurants, nightlife, and then market rate housing due to form-based code to ensure quality development. Mr. Wesley, it's my understanding that the form-based code is just optional at this point in downtown. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Glover, what happened a few years ago when we adopted the code is we did adopt it as a floating zone over downtown. So, it's been approved by council. Anybody that wants to apply it to the property today, they just sign an opt-in form with us and it changes the zoning to the form-based code.
Okay. I think it would be a good idea to look and try to change that, and if my colleagues agree with me, I think that would be something worthwhile to look into so that we can still have the high-quality efforts that brought Mr. Humantel down to downtown and bringing other developments as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Yes?
Is there a Prop 207 issue there?
We've started already looking at this issue. We've been working with Jeff in order to really be able to sort of, be able to place the form-based zone code over the area and address 207. So, we've already started to work with them and we think we have a solution.
Mr. Kavanaugh?
I just want to comment, I really appreciate the comprehensive approach that you've taken in probably a record period of time for groups that have studied downtown, because I've seen a lot of studies throughout the centuries that I've been around, and they tend to take forever and gather a lot of dust. And I think you've taken the, really, you've identified really key elements and shown how they do work together. And I think you've shown us examples of what we are doing now that we can enhance. And I think you have a, it's an excellent recipe. I know, Joe, you appreciate that. It's an excellent recipe for, you know, a great outcome. Thank you.
I would like to comment too, is we know there's a lot of work that had been done in the past, and we heard that a lot, that let's don't undo. And there's a lot of depth and breadth of projects and strategic directions that have been established, and we didn't want to override those. We feel that they're still important. That's why we didn't go into a lot of depth. We felt like this was an avenue, a recipe, but each person could put their own ingredients and move in their own directions with it. So, thank you, we appreciate that very much.
Councilmember Luna?
Joe, I just want to thank you for all your efforts. I know you worked really hard with the committee, you guys did an amazing job. I want to live there, so I want, I'm excited that this is going to be happening in the downtown area. I can hardly wait until, you know, all these people come, that we have restaurants, that it becomes a very vibrant committee, a community. And I'm so, I'm really pleased with the light rail and the opportunity that's going to bring. So, thank you so much for all your efforts, really, truly appreciate it.
Had we presented this when we thought we were going to be ready early summer, it's a very different picture from early summer to today. And last week, as I sat and watched the light rail, I thought it's almost anticlimactic because it has begun. And that's, and a lot of what we envisioned is starting, and there's new establishments coming downtown and things. So, we're excited about where Mesa is going.
Mr. Richards?
I appreciate the grab bag, grab bag of priorities here, there's a lot. And, you know, having 12 priorities is, you know, I know there's a lot of box and a lot of constituents you're, you're trying to check here. If you had to pick one...
Oh, don't do that.
Or if the committee, if the committee, I mean, you said in the committee deliberations, you have a couple of committee members here. If you had to pick one, what would it be? I mean, this is a lot to chew. And there's, there's a lot of financial commitment behind stuff like this with a city with 125 square miles plus of priorities. What is that big priority? What is that?
Let me say this first, and I didn't say that in, this, we see these as kind of short-term. This is the next five years that we can grasp onto those. And I should have said, we did not listen to the priority listing. We struggled with that. I'm going to go out on a limb and if I were to say, but I can say there's one or two that we heard over and over and over. Market rate housing was one we heard a great deal about. Restaurants and nightlife, we heard a great deal about it. But I think that the reality is they all kind of work together. I mean, you know, if we're going to have nightlife and we're going to have more people down here, we have to have a safe environment. So, it's, I don't know there's one priority, and a lot of them are catalysts for other things to happen. You know, it's the chicken and the egg, which will come first. So, I'm not going to give you one, but those were a couple of it surfaced a lot unless my committee members want to...
Yeah, you guys want to chime in there at all?
I don't mind chiming in.
Shocking, Charles.
I would add two brief points. You asked for one, but I think it's hard to do.
You've aged since I've last seen you.
I have.
Yes.
The priorities that I think probably be most important, and I'll speak just for myself, because we didn't, we didn't prioritize. I think that the central main plan, and Jeff McPhay is here, he worked really hard on that, and it's a great document. And that's one of the things we kept talking about early on in the process. And I think adding the form-based code in downtown as a requirement helps make that a reality. And so, I think that's really important, and it's something the city can do. We talk about restaurants and market rate housing, it's great, but it's hard for the city to actually make that happen. That's really a private sector responsibility. The other thing that I think we uncovered in our many meetings, listening to people talk about downtown Mesa, you know, it's got a great infrastructure, it's got great streets and sidewalks and shade, and it's got museums and art. We have all those things already, but what we don't have is a really pretty way to get downtown. We don't arrive, people don't arrive downtown before they arrive downtown. Example that I would use is Disneyland. When you go to Disneyland, obviously an entirely different experience, before you get to any of the rides, you get to Disneyland. They make sure that when you're coming into the parking lots and other things, the kids start to get really excited because they realize they're getting to Disneyland. And I think that one of the opportunities Mesa has is when you get downtown, it's amazing, there's so much that we have that people don't realize. But I think a lot of people, they have a perception of what downtown is going to be before they get here. And beautifying those ways to get downtown for pedestrians, for people on bikes, just with landscaping and shade and other things, I think would make a huge impact downtown.
And I would echo on that in regards to having spent a lot of my life out on Southern Avenue, and I commented to Dennis the other day as I drove down there, it's exciting to drive down because there is a feeling that you have come to a location, and I think that same feeling needs to be brought downtown. And so, I applaud what is done in the Fiesta area and would look at the same kind of thing happening in downtown. And so, when you ask priorities, some of these can be, are easier fixes and some are a little bit more involved, some are things that you as a city can do, others are private citizens. So, that's why it's hard to prioritize too.
Right, and I, you know, I think there's definitely a next step here. There's some good work that was done. I mean, the things that you pulled together, reading the minutes, the meeting minutes as it went on was really interesting. But certainly, I mean, unpacking this a little bit, you know, what are the public priorities? What are the private priorities? What's the capital improvement plan items? You know, what's the, you know, who, what department of the city is going to own the vision? You know, how do they interact with the other departments and council members and districts to be able to, you know, pull that kind of focus in? I mean, I'd hope to see that this isn't the end, but just the beginning.
And that is, has been our...
Kudos to Chris too for kind of leading the vision to pull us together, so.
This was our vision from the beginning too, that it isn't a document, it just is put on a shelf and collects dust, but it's an active one. And I think the city manager's office and under Natalie's operation, we will assure that we begin to work through some of these and make sure that the stakeholders begin to see and can work together towards some common ones. We were asked many times about what's the next step, and we talked about that. And we felt like at this point, our charge was not the next step. Our charge was to give you a vision and give you the priorities, and we will leave that in your hands to determine what the next step. But I concur that it, there needs to be some next steps.
Thank you. Mr. Thompson?
You know, I love the concept. I'm glad that we're, that we're trying to build our future, and I always hate to be the doom and gloom guy. But, you know, we've had, we've had a study done, gosh, not, probably about two or three months ago, I think, there was a study that was done. And one of the biggest issues that came out of that is really trying to get property owners in our downtown to invest in their properties. And to that extent, there's nothing that the city can do. So, how do you go about that? Because the city can do everything that it can to, within its means, to help spur that development, but at some point in time, our community has to invest out of their own pocket into their own properties to, to upgrade or to attract those businesses and that development to our downtown. How do we move that ball?
And I would say that we as a committee don't have an answer to that. We recognize that is an issue. I do believe though, that as progress comes in other areas, and as property owners, some of them do begin to invest in their property, others will feel committed to it, or, or they will get out of the business and because the property rates, prices of, will go up and they'll sell their business. I think that's what we're going to see. Charles probably can answer that too in regards to his builder, but...
I agree. I think that one of the many attributes of downtown Mesa is there's some great buildings here, some great stock. And as you look at urban areas, and we had a fair amount of discussion about restaurants, and it's not something the city can really control. Except that i-if it's a great place to walk around in and be in, then those places are more likely to turn. It's harder to do in locations where you don't have good stock because it's really expensive to build a restaurant and to build a building and do all those things. It's much better if you can go in and retrofit. And I think that in part is where the form-based code comes in. I think that the form-based code, it prevents people from building a project that interrupts that pedestrian experience. It prevents somebody from coming in and building sort of just the bare minimum, if you've ever seen the Office Space movie. You know, you want somebody who's going to come in and build quality product, and I think, at least with my own experience with the form-based code, we came in, we had good intentions, we thought we had a great plan, but working with the city, we came up with a better plan. They had some good ideas and we went back and forth, and I think those things really helped to create a better pedestrian environment. And there are two users for every building. Every building is going to have the users that work in it or live in it or, you know, eat in it. And, but that's a small percentage of who uses that building in the downtown. The bigger group of people who use that building are all the people that never go inside of it but walk by it every day. And, you know, it's sort of the inverse of the dark alley. We all know why we don't go down a dark alley. We don't stop and think, wow, there's water behind the dumpster and I can't see what's there and there's no light. You just have a bad sense and you don't go. And I think that what the form-based code will help do, and if, if we're able to do other improvements with infrastructure, getting people downtown is sort of the reverse of a dark alley, which is make people without stopping to realize why they like something to continue on because they like it. And I think in the end, that's probably the best thing you can do to convince those owners. I mean, you're right, they have to ultimately, the people that own those buildings have to either reinvest in it or sell it to somebody who will, or lease it to somebody who will. I think all those things make it easier for that person to do it because it's more attractive financially for them to do so.
Well, I know, and I've talked to a couple of people about this, but Frank McRae and I were up in Boulder two or three weeks ago. And, you know, you look at something like their 19th, I think it's 19th Street and Earl, phenomenal location. Frank and I just kind of walked around in amazement, looking at what Boulder has done to their downtown and how vibrant that was. And what they did is they blocked off the end of, of, of one of their main roads, diverted traffic around it, bricked everything in the middle, planted shade trees in the street, and now they have this vibrant downtown walkway with merchants that are just, you know, lining the place. I mean, it was, you know, we went down there in the middle of the week and it was packed. You know, you go in on a, we went down on a Sunday night and it was packed. So, you know, it'd be great, I mean, we have some great opportunities right now with the momentum that we have with light rail being here, and I'm hoping that helps spark some of that drive. Spring training right around the corner, have opportunity to bring a lot of that spring training traffic into our downtown area. So, you know, I'm looking forward to having a vibrant downtown. I think it's, it's a great idea, I'm just ready to move.
Thank you. Mr. Fenter?
I know we're going long, just a quick little note, agree with much of what's been said, and thank you so much for all the service and the work that you guys have done. The only thing I would say, the bigger picture is, so we have the downtown visioning now, we've had the Falcon Field visioning, this kind of for the city manager, and we've also had a lot of work done over in the Fiesta District and a lot of work. So, what is that next step? Who is the person or department? Is it economic development? Who is it that takes this tremendous amount of hard work and really starts to see it roll? I know the, you know, the council members in these different areas are the ones that need to, but I felt like it's like this lead ball that unless somebody just stays under it and keeps yelling and pushing, we don't get to that next step. And I'm kind of seeing a little bit of Wayne out there at Falcon Field on that, on that strategic visioning. So, I'm hoping that the staff, the professional staff will come back and say, okay, with these studies in these areas, this is how we're going to roll it through and really capitalize on the efforts, so that's all.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. So, actually, for Falcon Field, there is a dedicated person that is being funded out by Falcon Field from economic development. And actually, we've got some strong leads and a lot of things that are, discussions that are taking place out at Falcon Field. So, we have a plan, and I think that has very much helped the staff and the vision of trying to attract the medical devices group. We were in the running for some, and I think Councilmember Luna is very much aware of some of these groups that we're talking to out there. So, I would say actually that implementation of that plan, it continues to move forward. And, you know, sometimes it just, the development of these and working with potential prospects takes a little time, but there's active conversations going on in that area. And I think it helps because we do have a dedicated individual who has other responsibilities, but they are the only one working on Falcon Field and working with the staff of Falcon Field. Same thing down in the Fiesta District, there is an assignment made, so we have an ownership of that. The thing that I will tell you, my experience in doing economic development for almost 30 years, is what you want to be very careful with is creating silos of economic development. Because no one, you need to have the champion, but economic development touches so many things. And we saw here today, it touches public infrastructure, it touches promotions, it touches public safety. And so, it really takes a collaborative effort. And I, in all my experience in working major cities, downtowns, downtowns are, it's kind of that soup where everything comes together. And so, we have been working on a regular basis, meeting with the DMA, NEDCO, economic development, Natalie's involved, Jeff's involved, and we sit down and talk about what are the projects that we're working on. As council knows, we have right now today, out on the street, and actually, the evaluation's been completed for a request for proposal for development at the corner of Center and Main. And we're glad to say that Lorenzo, who was on this committee, Lorenzo Pettis, was very much part of that. And so, we will, we're excited because we have, we are starting to see interest in downtown. But frankly, if you want to look at the success of downtown Tempe or Phoenix, yeah, the private sector's involved, but Mr. Humantel couldn't do his project without the city's major contribution. Escobedo doesn't happen without the city's major contribution. One McDonald in downtown Mesa didn't happen but for the city's contribution or participation or giblet or whatever. So, I expect, and I think if we expect to see great things happen in downtown, the city will be very intimately involved, and we expect to be. And we're trying to position ourselves so that we can be in that role with the corner of Center and Main and looking at other opportunities. So, there are going to be things coming, I think, to council here pretty quickly. And so, it'll be a little different for Mesa, be playing in this role. We haven't always played that role. We've kind of sold off a lot of land, we've kind of backed, we've not played in that role significantly. And I would suggest if we're going to be, if we want to see the models of what's happened in downtown Phoenix and Tempe, we will have to step up a little bit more as a city in our participation and making offerings, like the giblet offerings and being involved in the development phase of some of these projects. Because right now, while Mesa's seen as a good opportunity, everybody's waiting for, and we appreciate, you know, Charles and his group, because we, everybody, you know, it's always that risk of who wants to be here first, and we keep saying, well, Charles did it, so. But we keep pointing to that. So, it's getting that market rate housing, and I really do appreciate that. That is what we hear from the restaurants, is they want to know where is that population after five that's going to come down to downtown. And so, market rate housing will drive a lot of activity into downtowns. And you see everybody in every city vying for that part of it, whether it's Tempe and Phoenix. That's, one of their top priorities is bringing downtown development. So, we'll continue to brief the council, I think you're going to see some projects coming. We'll have to go through some education about what are the tools that we have available. We're limited in the state of Arizona, but we will be as competitive as any other city in the state in making those opportunities available.
I agree with all the things you've said. I have a little bit different tech based on being in the private sector, and I'll say something that Chris probably wouldn't say, and you have two tremendous assets in the downtown. One of them is Chris and one of them is Jeff. And they understand literally... And they understand literally how to make downtowns happen. And I can tell you, and I think probably the last two projects are projects that we've done, and there are times where I have to call Chris or I have to call Jeff, but they're always willing to find a long-term urban solution. And I think that's invaluable. That doesn't happen in every city. Not every city has people in the city manager's office that understand the long-term view of urban.
Thank you. Well, let me join in expressing our gratitude. This was a project that was launched by Mayor Finter at the time and Councilmember Glover's strong suggestion. And I, so I have no fingerprints on your, the formation of your committee, but I have been very interested and appreciative of the work that you've done. One thing that I'm encouraged about with regard to going forward and a feeling that I have that your labors will not be put on a shelf is the genius and the approach that you've taken, taken to making your report a one-page document. And I don't, I don't mean that in a smart aleck way. I think it really, going forward, I think the gold standard for any group like yours ought to be that we have one page. Because we do have a lot of great reports that are taking up dust in, on the seventh floor. So, my commitment to you is to take this page and put it up in the mayor's office so that it's not collecting dust, but it's something that we're constantly reminded of. I do however, I love the full one-page. Natalie, if you don't mind, we need to get a nice designed one-page, but I need all of the small texts on this as well, because that's where a lot of the genius is, that you've condensed probably a very lengthy document down into one page and done it in a, in a very intelligent way. So, thank you to the folks that are here, thank you. I know Lorenzo, I think, put a lot of wordsmithing into this document, so I need to thank him the next time I see him. The thing I like about this document, was that? Was Lorenzo here? Oh, thank you, nice job. The, one thing I like about this document versus the electronic document is this one is audacious enough to say this is a five-year plan. And I love that because I think one of the frustrations I think we all have with downtown is, okay, how long are things going to sit without seeing something dramatic shift a little bit? So, I'm thrilled that we, let's take a five-year approach to some of the things that are on this document so that we feel some urgency and we see some things happen. Clearly, the, there are roles for the city to play included in the action plan that is here, that some of the things that jump off, and some of them are more private sector, but some of them are clearly city, things that we need to have our, our fingerprints on. Safety is a word that I've heard several times. I think, I think we do have a very safe downtown, but I think we need to make sure that that is an image, one of the things that come to mind when people think of downtown is they just, any, any concern about safety is just not there. So I'm looking forward, I know we have seen a report from our police department with regard to their plan for safety and the light rail. I'd like to hear more of that because I'd like the community to hear more of that, just so that everybody understands that that's a priority in our downtown, particularly related to light rail. I echo what's been said about the form-based code. I look forward to staff helping us understand how we can legally make the form-based code the standard that we follow in downtown. Also, events is something that jumps off of this, is something that the city needs to pay, play a role in. And I know we've had some discussions about the great potential we have for some fabulous events in downtown Mesa, linking the light rail to some of the assets downtown and some of the other attractions that bring literally hundreds of thousands of people downtown. So I'm looking forward to hearing before too long, some reports from the city on some great events for downtown. And then when it comes to infrastructure, there are some code words that we've heard, shade and stucco, and what word that evokes in my mind would be the colonnade. I think, I'm looking forward to hearing from staff an idea for us to partner with the property owners downtown so that we can preserve the, this very important asset of shade downtown, but do it in a way that exposes the really beautiful buildings that we have on Main Street that are, would differentiate our Main Street and our downtown from anything else you can see on the light rail route. Housing and restaurants, obviously are a priority and it's less clear that the city is the one pulling the trigger on that, but I think we are. I think there's things that, I think we need to realize that what happened last Saturday is really just the beginning of downtown Mesa. It's not a plateau, it's a jumping off point. I had the privilege a few months ago to be invited to attend a program called the Mayor's Design Institute where they invited five or six mayors, and I was very privileged to be there. I was there with the mayor from Oakland and San Antonio and Portland, some very sophisticated cities that have done a lot with regard to downtown redevelopment. And I, and the point of this is you go and you pitch your project and then there's five or six world-class designers that pick it apart and tell you what's wrong or what's good and what you ought to do. And so I went and pitched downtown Mesa and the first thing that they said was you need to go to Salt Lake City. You need to run, not walk to Salt Lake City because Mesa reminds us of where Salt Lake City was 15 years ago. There's a lot you can learn there. So, it took me a few months, but over our break this last couple of months, I was able to go there and to be, to spend a lot of time with their RDA, their Downtown Redevelopment Association. And there is a lot that we can learn. That city is spectacular and it does remind me of Mesa, just the bones of that place are very comparable to what we have in downtown Mesa. And it was very inspiring to see what the potential for our downtown could be. So, I'm committed as the mayor to doing all that I can to having downtown be an asset that we all enjoy. One thing that has really resonated this morning, I think, is our whole council from Eastmark to Riverview, you get a sense of real excitement and enthusiasm about downtown. This is not a parochial council. I think we all realize that downtown is a living room for all of our, for our entire community. We all will take pride in having a downtown that we want to bring our out-of-town guests to and that we can point to as, as obviously the city Mesa knows what it's doing because look what a great downtown they have. If we have an embarrassing downtown, that reflects poorly on the entire city. And so we need to take pride in it, and we do. So I appreciate that, that great attitude that's present on this council. So again, thank you very much. I look forward to having this document up in the mayor's office. I'm sure it'll be up in a lot of offices around town. And I look forward to taking on the challenge of having this be a five-year plan so that we, we see downtown sooner than later continue to make the progress that we're so excited about and that we celebrated last Saturday. Thank you. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item 2C, appointment to the Mesa Housing Authority Governing Board. Is there a motion? On a second? All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, that passes. Next item on the agenda is to acknowledge receipt of minutes of various boards and committees. Oh, I'm sorry, did I forget? I'm sorry, I forgot something here, didn't I? Next item is item 3, information pertaining to current job order contracting projects. Thank you. Any questions regarding the status of those projects? Thank you.
We've got a big list.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you. I was getting ahead of myself. Now, we're on acknowledged receipt of minutes of various boards and committees.
I just have a quick question, boards and committees type question. I'm curious about chairmanships and leadership and chairmanships. I mean, do we have any kind of term limits for all those kind of things? Do we have term limits within the committees themselves? You know, I just don't recall the parameters we put around some of those boards and committees.
There are, there are some term limits on some of the committees and I don't think all of them do. And so there isn't consistency. And so we've actually looked at bringing something back to Council probably in the next few months and trying to create consistency for that on the term limits. And so we'll probably be bringing back either an ordinance that will handle all of them as opposed to trying to go in and change every single ordinance.
Yeah, that's probably a good idea. I mean, I noticed like Economic Development had a, had a chair that was ex officio and I mean, it was really kind of screwy. And as you, you read all these minutes, it's like there's no consistency amongst them. So I really appreciate that effort.
Thank you. Thank you. I don't think we've voted on this yet, have we? Is there a motion on accepting the minutes of the Human Relations Advisory Board? Thank you, on a second. All in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, motion passes. Next item is to hear reports on meetings or conferences attended. Council, anything to share since our last meeting? If not, Mr. Brady, help us with scheduling of meetings and general information.
We'll just keep on rolling here, Mayor. So, our next study session will be Monday, August 31st at 5:15, followed by a council meeting at 5:45.
Thank you very much.
Oh, yes, I think there's a public safety proceeding that at four o'clock.
Great. If there's nothing else, would entertain a motion to adjourn? If I'm moved, all in favor, please say aye. Thank you, we are adjourned.